Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting of the September 16th Town Council to order. It is 7:05. I will turn it over to Vice Chair Arnson.
Thank you, Chair. As we have gotten back into the school year, the Town Council wanted to recognize a student who has been interning for the council all summer is continuing into the fall. Hayden Meadows, can you wave, Hayden? Because I'm going to sing your praises now and I want them to see who I'm talking about. Hayden is an AP student at St. Francis High School in his senior year where he is captain of the mountain bike team.
Go Knights.
Go Knights. Though his family did not lose their home, they have certainly felt the impact. His mother's business Crescent Yoga on Lincoln on our west side suffered severe damage. And after the process of remediation, like so many other businesses up here is still struggling to stay afloat. Send folks up here to these businesses. Let's get our neighbors to come on in. During and immediately after the Eaton Fire, Hayden helped organize his friends and other students to clean up and assist around town wherever they identified folks in need. He also reached out directly to the Town Council asking how could he help? And he was immediately put to work. Hayden has attended many meetings with me and others and quickly became the digital designer for the council. Many of the council members probably have not put a face to Hayden yet, so that's who's been doing that hard work. He's been creating slides for Zoom meetings, social media flyers for events, and informational flyers for topics like fire aid grants, community meetings, and the upcoming Afterburn 5K/10K run in January. Hayden has responded to this incredibly difficult year with fortitude and compassion that we can all be proud of and learn from. Please help me welcome the awesome Hayden Meadows.
Hayden, do a quick town just to make sure.
Yep. All right. Please stand, remove your hats, and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hayden, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That is our custom. Reginald.
Thank you very much.
Soda only, Hayden. Soda only. Got it.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Hayden. Moving on to roll call, Councilmember you.
Good evening, councilmembers. If I say your name, please state "I" right here. Connor Sapola.
Excused.
Victoria Net.
Here.
Nick Arnson.
Here.
Melissa Marona.
Here.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
John Carmody.
Here.
Darlene Green.
Excuse me.
Isis Molden.
Here.
Japhina Musson.
Here.
Vivek Stuart Gordon.
Here.
Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Justin Maramas.
Here.
Diane Marcusson.
Here.
Sylvia Vega. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Moving.
I think I'm here.
Oh, Reggie, I'm so sorry. We got distracted. Sorry, Reg.
I'm levitating around the room.
Councilmember Reginald Wilkins.
Afton.
Dr. Reginald Wilkins.
Yay! Sorry!
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilmember you. We are moving on to approving our agenda. Go ahead, Vice Chair Arnson.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, fellow council and community members. There are agendas at the back of the room as well as public comment cards. The council welcomes input from the community on both agendized and non-agendized items. If you would like to make a public comment, please fill out the card on the back table and give it to a councilperson on either end of these tables. Additionally, I would like to remind everyone in the room, please silence your cellphones and other noise-making devices. As the council does not respond to public comments during the meeting, if you would like a response, please include your contact information. That's important. We want to make sure we follow up on those. Public comments are limited to two minutes. These guidelines are in place to ensure that everyone wishing to make public comment has the time to do so and that we can conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion. Councilmembers, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Thursday, September 4th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. It was sent to you on Thursday, September 11th. I have the following changes. Let's start at the top. 2.5 corresponding secretary, you can strike, please. 3.4, instead of Ranger Kidd, Councilmember Wong will read that report. 5.1, instead of Hans, it will be Mark Mariscal reading that report for CICAR. You can strike 6.3, the legislative report. And please add 8.3. 4603.01 will do a census tract report. Backing up, and excuse me for that, 5.3. Strike Steve. It will be Regina Kinji. Thank you for joining us, Regina. That's it. Thank you, Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. So, are there any additional modifications tonight? Seeing none, I move that the agenda be approved with said changes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the agenda with said changes? Any opposed? Any abstaining? I see none. Jack Harys, thank you so much. Okay. Good evening, councilmembers, community partners, and neighbors. As we gather this month, I want to focus my remarks on the ongoing rebuilding efforts across Altadena. This is the work of a community determined to heal and rise stronger after devastation. And while it sometimes feels like pushing a planet-sized boulder uphill, there are signs of progress all around us. To date, we have seen 251 new building permits issued, with 343 currently waiting comments back from the property owner or their agent. 127 new foundations have been poured and called for inspection, each one a visible and tangible step forward in our recovery. On the land side, there are 28 parcels still awaiting full clearance. 14 of those have debris removal permits and 14 don't. To date, 340 lots have come on the market, with 177 sold and 163 for sale as of today. These figures represent loss, yes, but also opportunity, the chance for new families and new energy to take root in Altadena. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has formally transitioned oversight of recovery efforts to our local Los Angeles Corps office. Their final project, the restoration of our golf course, is already underway and is expected to be completed by Christmas. That milestone will serve as both a symbol and a resource, a beloved piece of Altadena life brought back to us, and a place for community connection and recreation. Today, we announced the launch of the Long-Term Recovery Group, or LTRG. The LTRG is nationally recognized as a best practice in disaster recovery. It is by locals, for locals, grounded in the strength and compassion of Altadena and our neighboring communities. Its mission is clear: coordinate recovery services and mobilize resources to help individuals and families affected by the Eaton Fire; ensure a survivor-centered, equitable, and locally-driven recovery process; and support rebuilding efforts across our region. It is unprecedented. There are 150 partner organizations with one mission: our recovery. The LTRG is housed in the Collaboratory on Woodbury in the heart of Altadena. It will officially open on October 7th. Visit eatonfirecollaborative.org for more information. And so, we are rebuilding through collective effort, neighbor-helping neighbor, and through our commitment to support one another and our local small businesses that are the backbone of our town. It is going to take all of us, every ounce of our resilience, generosity, and shared purpose, to carry this work forward. And while there is still a long road ahead, the progress we've made together gives me confidence that we will not only rebuild, but that we will renew Altadena in ways that honor our past and prepare us for a strong future. Thank you so much. Moving on to our vice chair report.
Thank you, Chair. Yesterday was the beginning of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Did everybody notice all the fanfare and excitement and all the news and stuff about it? Me either. As we claim to recognize this community, it's obvious how far we've fallen, and when it comes to embracing the importance of our diverse makeup of our population, let alone the incredible contributions and achievements found in our immigrant community. Altadena is filled with an amazingly diverse population, and it's fair to say, we're all hurting now. There's no competition for who is most vulnerable or most traumatized. But I am definitely compelled tonight to point out how often our local Hispanic and Latinx community seems to be left out of the conversation. They make up over a quarter of our town's population, easily our largest minority population, yet they are consistently underrepresented and forgotten. So I welcome National Hispanic Heritage Month as an opportunity to encourage ourselves to keep these incredible residents in our conversations and plans to rebuild our town, and to celebrate the deep, rich culture that they bless us with. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Recording Secretary Kim Yu for the approval of the minutes.
Councilmembers, I sent a draft of the August meeting minutes for your review on September 9th and received two corrections, and I have updated the minutes to reflect those changes. Are there any other changes that you'd like to bring forth tonight? Hearing none. I move to approve the minutes as corrected.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Anyone abstaining? We've got two. Are you abstaining?
No.
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 Councilmember Vega and Councilmember Maramas are abstaining? Say it again. Oh, and Councilmember Stewart. Okay. Any opposed? Okay. We're good. Thank you so much. Moving on to our treasurer's report, Councilmember Marona.
Good evening. We are a volunteer group, and as such, we pass the can to take donations. So if you feel led, please, by all means, go right ahead. This past month, we had expenses of $455.26. We took in $102 at our last meeting. So our opening balance was $7,609. Our closing balance was $7,256.25. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Don't spend it all at once. I know, everybody's freaking out. Like, the whole time I've been here, it's always been $2,000. But we have partners in this room to thank for that. We are moving on to our public safety reports. Where is our Captain Marquez? Here he comes. Yes, walk-up songs. You need a walk-up song. A walk-up song.
I don't know what it would be. I'm afraid right now what the things you'll come up with. You know, Ethan Marquez, Captain of Altadena Sheriff's Station, thank you very much. I want to talk a little bit quickly about one of our crime strategies in Altadena, and that is utilizing deputies in an undercover capacity or plainclothes capacity. And just over an hour ago, because of that strategy we're utilizing, a couple deputies in plainclothes went out and were able to find and arrest a 245 suspect. She was an assault and deadly weapon suspect just down the Pasadena area. There was a crime that occurred Sunday where somebody tried to slash somebody else with a machete, and he fled the area. But due to their diligent, you know, hard work and perseverance, they went out there and they found him down in the Pasadena area and arrested him. And that was all due to one of the crime strategies we have. But the other thing that I want to talk about, that we recently had a community event called the Bus Pull, and that was on August 23rd. I think that the Town Council had a very successful team. I think a couple got injured. I hope you're recovering from that. However, I'd like to have Sergeant Lou and Lisa Lou from Temple Station come up with me, please. The event was very successful. We raised a lot of money. And what happened is that Temple Station came to Altadena Station and said, "We have this idea that we'd like to help raise money for the Altadena area and help them recover. And we would like to see if you'd like to partner with us." And we said, "Yeah, of course. That'd be a great idea." So Sergeant Lou is one of the instrumental people at Temple Station that helped out. And this is Lisa Lou from the Temple, let me make sure I say, Temple Station Sheriff's Outreach Foundation.
Jennifer Colosso.
Jennifer Colosso from the Outreach Foundation as well. And we'd like to present the two checks. Nick, are you up? Nick from Rotary? Or, I'm sorry, Mark. I'm sorry, Mark from Rotary. Sorry, Nick. And Melissa?
And Melissa's coming. She's the chair of the Altadena Eaton Fire Relief Fund.
Yes, come on up, Melissa. So, some of the money we raised, we raised $22,000 during that event. And there's two checks, and we'd like to present them to Altadena Rotary.
Thank you.
And then, the Altadena Eaton Fire Recovery Fund. So we can take picture. Oh, let's go over here a little bit. Oh, look, right here.
Yeah, we're going this way.
So hopefully, this money is supposed to go directly to the fire survivors of Altadena. But thank you. Oh, there are questions?
I do, I did just want to say that this kind of partnership is what we need to see in Altadena. We have been looking for our local communities to support us, especially through our business, small business recovery. So this was a fun and very lively way to raise $22,000 for Altadena. So we thank you from Temple Station. Thank you so much. It was so lovely to meet you, and thank you so much for coordinating this with them. Any questions?
Not a question, but I just wanted to, I had to look up what a 245 was, because I didn't know it's, you know.
245?
Yeah. Do you know what a 245 is?
Did you look it up already?
I did, yeah. It's a crime of assault with a deadly weapon. Aggravated assault. I had to look it up. I didn't know what you were talking about.
Yeah, so it's basically because somebody was trying to slash or kill somebody with a machete, so.
All right. Any other que, oh, go ahead, Dorothy.
Hi, Captain. So I just wanted to make everyone aware that we have people that are trying to scam our community. And in our census tracts, we had someone take the identity of a community member. That amounted to well over $20,000 of money that was given to someone who wasn't really that person. So definitely be careful out there.
And I hopefully that the person, the victim, can come to the station if they haven't already, and make sure we have a lot of detectives at the station, and they do a lot of follow-up, and hopefully can, you know, bring some resolution to, for the victim.
I do just want to say that we are working with the Sheriff's Station as it relates to preventing the wave of theft that we expect will occur in town as we begin rebuilding in earnest. We already know from other devastated fire ravaged communities that there's going to be construction equipment theft, that there's going to be construction materials theft. So the captain is working with his team to figure out ways in which we can subvert some of that as we go forward. But it is critically important that you report any crimes to the Sheriff's Station. Posting them on social media after the fact is great, but you have to call into the station or 911 if it's an emergency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right.
All right, I'm always available if you have questions, though. Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to the California Highway Patrol, and it is not Officer Keller, it is Officer Bay, new dad of number-two baby, Officer Bay, who I was very surprised to see here today.
Thank you, Chair Napp, for that. Sorry, if I'm a little slow, it's just for a lack of sleep, as we all know. I do have a credible, incredible partner and spouse at home taking care of my family. I hope everyone's family is doing well. So I'll keep this brief. I'm Officer Brian Bay with the California Highway Patrol, and I'll be providing the traffic crash statistics for the month of August. So for the month of August, the CHP in Altadena investigated a total of six traffic crashes. Out of those six traffic crashes, one was investigated for driving under the influence. One was also investigated for hit-and-run. And we also had a traffic crash with major injuries regarding a e-bike on, I believe it was Washington and Altadena Drive. Just a little bit behind that, the driver was waiting to make a left turn going eastbound to northbound from Washington-Altadena, and the bicyclist was in the crosswalk crossing westbound from Altadena, or, excuse me, from Washington through Altadena Drive. That crash resulted in major injuries, unfortunately. And we just want to make sure that people are aware that we have other vehicles on the road other than four-wheeled vehicles, so please be cautious of that. The other traffic crashes were just property damage only. Altadena is still partnering with the Altadena, sorry, CHP-Altadena is still partnering with the Sheriff's Station regarding the crime suppression in the area. If there are any things that you might see traffic-related, please do not hesitate to contact our CHP office. You can find us online, through social media, or give us a call or walk right in. We have an officer there to greet you. Coming up, the end of this month, I can't give out what date, but the CHP will also be doing a, we'll just call it, an enforcement sting when it comes to vehicles illegally passing school buses. So obviously, school is in session, and that goes into my safety tip of the week is to make sure you drive to arrive, have a plan to get to school, especially if it's your first year at that school, whether it's Jackson, Webster, anywhere in the Pasadena-Altadena area. But we will be doing a enforcement with, I think, I don't want to mispronounce it, but it's ZUM, ZUM school buses. So we're going to be out there making sure that the little ones are getting to their destination safely. I wanted to keep that brief, but are there any questions from the council or members of the public?
What is your son's name?
My son was born August 25th, seven pounds and 13 ounces. I've kind of now been coached to, I had to provide this information, okay? I don't know, as a dad, it's beyond me, but yes, my son's name is Jackson.
Yay. So welcome, baby Jackson.
Thank you very much.
So good to see you. Thank you, and welcome back.
Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Just one.
Yes, sir.
Was the e-bike driving through the crosswalk?
That was what the report stated.
Okay, so are there rules about, you're supposed to walk it or drive it, or what? Because I could see how that could be.
Misconstrued. So it's technically a vehicle on the roadway. I'm not sure about the exact ordinances of where a bicycle should or shouldn't be. I don't know if that, the bicyclist was going to be maybe going into a business or somewhere else. They're supposed to be on the right-hand side of the road, which vehicles are supposed to give them room. However, vehicles are supposed to yield to traffic. So that's, they were still in the crosswalk actively. Not on the sidewalk, but the crosswalk.
I see that Officer Keller has joined the chat. Okay, is that it for questions for him? Great. Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
All right. We are moving to Forestry, and that is going to be Councilmember Wong. Oh, fire! So sorry! I know, because you weren't standing there. I didn't see you. It's usually Maria. It's been a rough day. Thank you so much. But now Dorothy will be ready.
I was trying to figure out what Officer Bay's walk-up song would be.
I know.
Be like "All Night Long" or something.
The Tigers.
The Tigers.
No, maybe the Barney song.
Beatles. Yeah, exactly. All right, good evening, Chair and Town Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Maria is at another function tonight, so you'll have to deal with me. So for August of 2025, total responses, 221. Patients receiving medical care was 161. Of those 161 patients receiving care, 127 of those were transported for a medical complaint. There was four fires reported in the month of August. There were two vehicle fires, two trash fires, and there was no damage reported with those fires. Forty-six good intent calls, one hazardous condition call, typically those are wires down of some sort, and six traffic accidents reported. So just for the sake of time tonight, I'm going to bypass the safety tip of the month, but I am going to discuss, I'm going to make mention of a recent miscommunication on a news story that ran on CBS, and it was picked up by other news affiliates. It discussed Los Angeles County Fire advocating for residents to stay behind and defend property on wildland incidents. The story was grossly taken out of context and was in reference to a fire brigade personnel who have been trained by our department, staying behind and patrolling areas where fire has burned through. So let me be clear. Los Angeles County Fire does not advocate, nor never has, for residents to stay behind and protect property during wildland fires. Conversely, we encourage our residents to be prepared by prepping and hardening their home, maintaining proper brush clearance, and always being prepared to evacuate if and when needed. Remember that Ready, Set, Go is your wildfire action plan and your template to being prepared for the wildland season. The Ready, Set, Go booklets are available at your local fire station and through our website at fire.ellacounty.gov/rg. Again, that's fire.ellacounty.gov/rg. And that concludes my report for this evening, unless there's questions.
Any questions for Chief Springle? Seeing none? You got off easy tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Good to be here with you guys tonight.
I wasn't expecting you. I thought, I think we got our wires crossed, so nice to see you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Now, we're going to do the report from Councilmember Wong from Forestry.
Thank you, Chair Napp. This is a notice from our Director of the Angeles National Forest, Ray Kidd, who couldn't be here today and asked us to accept his apology. And his report is for the Forest Service wanting to, this is the Forest Service Gateway Ranger District, wants to thank the Army Corps of Engineers for removing the burned special-use cabins within Millard Canyon area. The Forest Service is working on removing the final burned structure, along with repairing the trails in the Millard area, and developing a plan to reopen this area to the public again, but not quite yet. So the Forest Service is continually evaluating the areas of the Angeles and developing plans to restore public access when the burned area is safe. And he hopes to have more information in the coming months.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, we are going to move on to our special presentation, and I would like to give a warm welcome to our tax assessor, Assessor Jeffrey Prang. Please come up, and I will get out of my way.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Just a quick correction, I am not the tax assessor. I'm just the assessor. I don't do taxes. But I, it's awfully confusing, which I'll address in just a minute, but it's a pleasure to be here. I know that you're all probably thinking that, what better way to add a little excitement into your meeting than hearing from the county property tax assessor? But I want to thank your vice chair, Nick Arnson, for helping to facilitate this meeting, and thank you to the chair for the fair welcome. I've been your assessor since 2014, and I regret that I've not been here earlier to speak with you, but glad to have the opportunity this evening. So I'm going to tell you a lot of stuff about my office and our response to the fire. I'm going to start by telling you about, something about my office, emphasize what it is that I do not do. Because the one thing I do not do is the one thing everybody thinks I do. I do not collect property taxes. The person who collects property taxes has a very intuitive title. She's called the tax collector. That's why I always say, "Don't call me the tax assessor," because when you say "tax assessor," you're conflating two different departments. And when you call the county, nine out of 10 times, you want the tax collector, but 100% of the times, they send you to the assessor when you say "tax assessor." But it's just a little bit of background on my office, in case you're not familiar with it. I'm one of three countywide elected officials. Everybody knows the other two. That's the sheriff and the DA. I'm kind of the forgotten third one. I'm responsible for identifying and valuing all taxable property in the county. My office is the largest office of its type in the United States. I've got 1,400 employees. About half of them are real estate appraisers. We are responsible for valuing 2.5 million real property parcels and business assessments annually, which generate over $20 billion in property taxes, which goes to public schools, cities, and county services and special districts. And it is one of the primary sources of funding for vital public services, including public services. My office is the largest office of its type in the United States. I've got 1,400 employees, about half of them are real estate appraisers. We are responsible for valuing $2.5 million real property parcels and business assessments annually, which generate over $20 billion in property taxes, which goes to public schools, cities, and county services and special districts, and it is one of the primary sources of funding for vital public services, including public education, law enforcement, fire, libraries, parks, roads, et cetera. In a lot of ways, my office is the most important local government agency, because nobody else could do their job until I've done mine. And if I do my job well and thoroughly, then money which should be going to increase sheriff's department salaries is left on the table. Our role in the property tax administrative system is one piece of a relatively complex puzzle. There's a number of other departments, each have a different piece of that, of the property tax administrative system. The system is designed, I believe, for maximum public confusion. The way it works is when you buy a home, you record a deed with the registrar recorder, or if you do new construction, you get a permit from building and safety. Those deeds and permits then come to my office, where we do an assessment of the value of that property. We then turn that data over to another department you're probably not familiar with, called the auditor controller. They're the ones that tell you how much you owe. They apply the tax rates, apply the special assessments, the direct assessments, and then they turn over that data to another department called the treasurer and tax collector, and they're the ones that send out the bills and collect the payments. My primary job is the production of what we call the annual assessment roll, which is really just the inventory of all taxable property in the county. In addition to land and buildings, we also assess business personal property, which includes furniture, fixtures, equipment, and machinery, although it also includes mobile homes, boats, aircraft, both commercial aircraft and general aviation aircraft, and for some reason, racehorses. The assessment roll serves a couple of critical functions. Obviously, it's the foundation for the property tax system, although it's also a key document used by local government for planning, for planning their budgets in anticipation of property tax revenue, and that's also, thirdly, it serves as an important economic indicator as to the health of the local real estate market. I can report to you that the current assessed value of all property in LA County now exceeds $2.1 trillion, that's with a T. In the old days, they used to pay the assessor with a percentage of the assessment roll. But that's probably not such a bad idea, but the property values increased $82 billion over 2024, or 3.91% increase. That's the 15th consecutive year of property value growth in the county. So now I want to talk a little bit about the role that we've had in the most recent fires. You know, in the wake of those fires, people have had a tremendous amount of things on their mind, thinking about your property assessment and taxes was probably not the most important things that people were contemplating. I knew how important that was going to be, so that my office and I were responding at a time when the fires were still burning, trying to set things up to make sure we had avenues to get information to people that they, that they would need. While the assessment role does provide the foundation for taxation, it also plays a vital role in times of crisis. We are responsible for managing a number of programs to help provide relief to property owners. The most important program that we run is something called Misfortune and Calamity. This says, if your property is damaged or destroyed by the fires, I am obligated under law to lower the assessment of that property for tax purposes until the property is rebuilt. And it also provides that when your property is rebuilt, your pre-fire tax base will be restored. The basic qualifications are that you have, the property has to experience $10,000 of damage or more, and that can include smoke damage, and you need to file a claim within 12 months of the incident, although I'm currently sponsoring legislation that will extend that filing period to 24 months to give people a chance to apply who may not have applied. About 60% of property owners filed a Misfortune and Calamity, about 40% did not. We lowered the assessments anyway, we did that proactively. The challenge is, we don't know where these folks are, the assessments went down and they were entitled to property tax refunds, which I'll touch on in just a second. Our office estimates that there are 24,000 parcels in the wildfire zone. Of those, 18,000, or 75% of all impacted parcels, have had their Misfortune and Calamity forms processed, whether they applied or not, which led to over $12 billion in assessed value reductions. We estimate there's about 11,000 properties were completely destroyed, 2,000 experienced partial damage, but were not totally destroyed, 5,000 experienced smoke damage, and there's about 6,000 additional properties that require other investigation. There's a number of options that are available to people after the disaster. We get a lot of questions, like how much can I rebuild, how much time do I have, what if I want to move, and the answer depends on individual situation, but here's a simple breakdown. When a permit is issued by the city or the county, building department, a copy of that permit, as I mentioned, comes to our office, and this notifies us that construction is planned, and we'll begin monitoring that property. Once construction has begun, it will be incrementally assessed as of January 1st, we call that the lean date, and added to the property's taxable value. So if your home was completely destroyed, we zeroed out the value on that improvement. But if you begin construction right now, and you're 10% done on January 1st, your tax base, your pre-fire tax base, will be restored at 10%. It's a little bit different than building codes, where they wait till there's a certificate of occupancy, we begin assessing immediately when construction begins. Our standard for reconstruction is substantially equivalent. That means if you build back essentially what was previously there, your tax base will be restored, also known as your Prop 13 tax base, will be restored. Anything that's built beyond substantial equivalent will be assessed at market value, so you would then get a new blended tax rate. There is no time limit to complete the rebuild at this time. If a property owner buys or builds a replacement property in Los Angeles County, there is a program known as Proposition 50, which allows you to transfer your old tax base within five years within LA County. You can keep the damaged property with a lowered assessed value, or something called a decline in value, whichever is lower. Any new construction to the property is then subject to reassessment. Another program called Proposition 171 allows you to move to one of 14 participating counties in California and take your tax base with you. The most valuable program is called Proposition 19. This allows you, if your property is damaged by a natural disaster, you have two years to buy and build another home anywhere in California, and you can take your pre-fire tax base with you to that new home. To avoid a tax increase, though, the replacement property must be of equal or lesser value than the pre-damaged home. If you buy a more expensive home, you would get a new blended rate, you'd be able to carry over your previous tax rate, but the value that exceeds the like-for-like comparison will be assessed at market value. One of the biggest obstacles that is keeping homeowners from receiving needed property tax relief is outdated contact information. Typically, most people, when you own a home, your mailing address and the address you live in are the same, but if your home was destroyed and you're not living there, or it's damaged, that remains the only address that we have on file, unless you provide us a new one, and this has been a big problem for my office as well as the county, because we, when we went to work, we lowered the assessments on those properties, 18,000 of them, within the first 90 days, and we then issued a notice of assessed value change to tell you what type of amendment that we made. If we didn't have your current mailing address, we'd be able to the one-on-file, which may be the damaged property, and that would end up coming back to us. The other challenge was the auditor controller, which is the department which sends out property tax refunds, also depends on our data for a mailing address to send those, so hundreds, if not thousands, of refund checks were being returned to us because we didn't have an updated mailing address, but there are things you can do. So there's a number of different things I wanted to emphasize for property owners. For a Misfortune and Calamity claim, if you're interested where you are in the process, most of them have been granted, but you could check on our website by typing in your property address, and it will tell you whether the claim is pending, denied, or accepted. You can also update your mailing address on our website by registering for the assessor's e-service account portal. This allows you to do a lot of functions through our office without coming to an office or going through the mail. If you have not filed a Misfortune and Calamity form, you can still do that. We encourage everybody, even if we've already reduced your assessment, we urge you to file that claim that helps us keep track of you and make sure we have the right address. And then I'm really emphasizing another program that we have called the Homeowner Alert. I'm sure you're all familiar with the concern about scams being perpetrated on fire victims. We have, in recent years, there's been an increase in instances of title fraud. You know, people record a grant deed or deed of trust on your property, and then do all types of financial shenanigans, and it's a real pain in the neck to get your property back, and sometimes you could be burdened with a lot of debt. The Homeowner Alert allows anybody who owns property in LA County to register their email address on our website, and then anytime something's recorded on your deed, you'll get an email notification within 48 hours. If it's something you intended to happen, that's great, if it's not, there'll be instructions as to how to report that to proper authorities. If you don't sign up for the Homeowner Alert, the first notification that you receive that somebody is monkeying around with your deed is a letter in the mail from the registrar recorder 30 or 45 days later. They can wreak a lot of havoc in that amount of time, and if we don't have your mailing address, you know, that letter from the registrar recorder may be delayed as well. Another program that we, that we're going to be applying is something called a decline in value. A decline in value is what happens when the current, the current market value of your home falls below your assessed value. Your assessed value is essentially what you paid for the home plus the 2% annual adjustment. It may not be as applicable to people who own their homes for a long time, but if you bought your home recently, let's say you purchased your property for $1 million, it had smoke damage, but it's not totally destroyed, but you try to sell it and you can't sell it for more than a half a million. That means that you've lost value in that property. It was assessed at a million, its market value is a half million, I'm going to lower the assessment for that. Example where it does not apply is, let's say you bought your home in 1990 for $200,000, and now it's worth $1 million, but it was in the fire area, it's not as valuable, so you only sell it for a half a million dollars. Well, you lost equity, but you did not lose value of the home, because your assessed value is $200,000, you sold it for $500,000, the decline in value would not apply in that regard. One thing I did do regarding decline in value is, we value your property every year on January 1st, the lean date. Obviously, the fires happened a few days later. Normally, a decline in value would not be able to be applied until the following January, so I'm sponsoring legislation with Assemblymember Mike Gibson that will allow us to move all the fire damaged properties to be qualified for the January 1st, 2025 lean date, so we can apply that value reduction in the current year. I'm sponsoring a whole bunch of bills, one of the things that my office has challenged by is the Revenue and Taxation Code, which guides how we do our business. It's not very flexible, it does not anticipate conditions such as the fire, so I've proactively introduced some legislation that would help us address those problems before they become a problem. One of them is to extend the timeline for filing an application, another one is to extend the timeline for rebuilding, another one is, I just discussed, is the decline in value, and then there's another one which is really important. We've discovered, particularly in Altadena, there's a lot of people who've owned the family homes, sometimes for generations, maybe it was grandma's property, then mom and dad's property, now the kids are living there, but they continued to pay the bills, but they never came to the county to change the name on the deed when mom and dad died. This is a problem, because if your name is not on the deed, it's not your house, and you don't qualify for property tax relief, there's all types of other challenges. When I, when my office becomes aware of the, that there's been a change in ownership due to a death, I need to update the records, and you could be subject up to eight years in back taxes, and the law only gives you six months to fix all this, which in the wake of fires, is not very, not very practical. So Senator Perez is sponsoring a bill that I've, that I proposed, that will extend that period for people to fix their ownership issues to three years. And then the last bill I wanted to mention, it's not going to pass, something I'm actually pretty angry about. You may have heard that the, under the governor's expedited permit process, you're entitled to rebuild up to 110% of what was there before the fire. That's a building code issue. The assessment standard is you have to rebuild to substantial equivalent in order to maintain these tax benefits, which means that if you build 110%, the way the law is written, I got to send you a tax bill for that 10%, which I didn't think was very equitable for people who just went through the devastation of these fires. So there was a bill by Assemblymember Nick Schultz, 1253, Assembly Bill 1253, which would have aligned the fire, the assessment standard and the building standard, so that people rebuilding didn't have to worry about that difference. That died in the state assembly, so I'm now trying to wrestle with my staff, are we going to have to start issuing supplemental tax bills to people who are following these emergency codes that have been allowed by the governor? Anyway, I've covered a lot of material, I think the chair's kind of giving me that look like she's going to give me the hook and wrap it up. I covered a lot of material, happy to answer any questions if that's appropriate.
Great, I see one from Councilmember Vega.
I actually have a couple of questions. So is the Misfortune and Calamity form the same as ADS-820?
Let me introduce Nicole White-Gamble, she's the Director of Operations. Her division is largely responsible for a lot of fire response. I don't know all those secret numbers that the Board of Equalization puts on these forms.
Well, my, and my other question was regarding the ADS-820, for damage of a minimum of $10,000, is like, documentation need to be loaded up, or how is that, how is that going to be done?
You could submit the documentation online, is that what you mean, could you submit it online? Yes, that's fine, that's fine.
You have to submit your documentation of whatever bills you have for remediation, whatever things regarding that, okay? And how would that then help out homeowners in terms of relief for them?
So we're going, we are going to be lowering the assessment, therefore the property taxes will be reduced accordingly.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Three quick questions, can we post these slides on our site?
You may, we will provide those to you.
Thank you. And how long will those refund checks be held before they're turned to the state? Is that what happens?
They'll go back to the state, because they're issued by the county. Nicole, do you know?
Yeah, so like, they're trying to do is...
Will you go up to the mic? Thank you.
They'll be making every attempt to go ahead and reissue whenever possible, so they'll be returned to them, and for those, they're researching them and still trying to seek out, but that's why, like Assessor Prang said, if people change their mailing address, we're sharing information, and they're just really acting those as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And my last question is, the substantially equivalent, I think this is probably what you mentioned with the last legislation, does this apply to height?
No, from our perspective, we don't care about the configuration of the home, we're looking at square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Great, is that it?
I think we have...
Wait, go ahead, Councilmember Malden.
So I have a question that I've been receiving a lot. If a person lives in a home that was built in the 1970s and before, how is it possible to rebuild a home with equal assessed value in 2025?
So you're going to be building, if that home was totally destroyed, you're going to be building a brand-new home. What we're going to do is maintain the 1970 tax base on a brand-new home. So if you're paying, if you bought your home in 1970 for $50,000, and now it's, the day before the fire was assessed at $200,000, your $200,000 tax base will be applied to your brand-new home. Does that make sense? Is that your question?
Yeah, because I think the question was if we're required to upgrade our building materials, making everything fire safety, and wouldn't that then increase the size?
Those are, those are building code issues, which we're not interested in, we're just interested in the size.
Councilmember Wilkins?
I received a letter from the assessor's office, and I guess there's like a bit of a survey wrapped up in there. Can you say anything about, they may have filled out an application or something, but I didn't receive a letter. So do you know if a letter is going to residents?
Something recently?
Yeah.
Are you familiar with this?
Like, a couple of weeks ago, people were getting letters from the assessor's office.
It would be great to see that. We have been sending out information regarding changing your mailing address, which has been really important. Also, if we received an application, but we didn't have enough documentation, people have been reaching out directly to get that documentation via both email and also by letters, and that's been the extent, and also, we've sent out things to explain the prorated tax bills, et cetera. So it'd be nice if there's a survey link to it for us to see, and we can verify on that.
Ryan Cortez, Appraiser of Misfortune and Calamity. It may be...
Councilmember Wilkins, can you, you want to take it outside so they can see what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, she'll give it to her. Okay, she'll give it to her. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, are we good on questions? One more, and we're moving on.
Just one question about updating the mailing address. If your mailing address to your empty lot is, has a forwarding address, is that enough? Or do we really need to update where we're at right now?
So the forwarding address, that's a post office issue. It would be better for us if you gave us an address where you're at, and you can change it as often as you need to. You can do that online, you can do that from your mobile device. I would really encourage you as well to set up a property profile on our website with your email address. We're finding it's really easy to reach people with email if we have it.
Great. Answer your question? Good. Okay, councilmembers, thank you for your attention. Thank you so much for coming up to Altadena for seeing us, and we appreciate all the information, and we look forward to the slides, which we will also get on our website. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, they're leaving materials in the back, so if you need anything, they're probably on the piano. Okay, thank you so much. We are going to move on to our community reports. First up is the Community Coalition for Altadena Recovery, otherwise known as CCAR, and that is going to be delivered by Mark Mariscal.
All right, so good evening. Thank you, Chair Knapp. I'm here representing Hans, who is going to be here this evening. He's from Altadena Heritage. But CCAR stands for Community Coalition for Altadena Recovery. We were appointed, the organizations were appointed by the Supervisors' Office. It's comprised of eight organizations: Altadena Town Council, Altadena Coalition of Neighborhood Associations, Akona, Altadena Heritage, Altadena Historical Society, Altadena Chamber of Commerce, Altadena NAACP, Altadena Rotary Club, and Altadena Wild. We meet every other week, sometimes on Zoom, sometimes in person. The last meeting that you had was August 19th. Since that time, we've had two CCAR meetings. On August 21st, we discussed the ongoing engagement with Business Community. We talked about central database that we'll be working with the Long-Term Recovery Group on creating a database for unscrupulous contractors, as we heard earlier this evening. The Long-Term Recovery Group, they had a press conference today, you're going to hear about that. We talked about some of the legislation, SB 629, SB 782, SB 549. We received a presentation from Regional Planning about the draft interim ordinance that actually was introduced on, I think, September 2nd or 3rd, the Tuesday after Labor Day. So we heard about that from Regional Planning. On September 4th, we got together and we talked about a couple of different things that the organizations were doing. Most important, that September 27th and October 4th, along with other things in between, are very busy days, and so please don't plan anything. On the 27th, there's an Autry Block Party, Habitat for Humanity Raise the Roof Gala, LA Opera on the Park, which hopefully I haven't seen Guillermo from the parks. Hey, Guillermo, I'm glad to see you. The Bloom fundraiser at the farmer's market, impact of LA fires, and LBTQ+ community at the library. Rotary is having a pancake breakfast on that day. Altadena Steadfast Open House, and then you'll hear from Nikki of the October 4th event in the evening. That's all I have for that.
Great, we will move on to Rotary, and that will be Mark Mariscal again.
Wow, who is that guy? All right. All right, so I do have here, so after I finish, I'm going to walk right now if anybody wants any Pancake Breakfast tickets. Normally, for those of you that know, we do it twice a year. We normally charge $5. The funds all go to the Altadena Mountain Rescue Team. But I will tell you that, like the May event, we had a Rotary Club from Massachusetts and Burbank both give money, so we did it free then. We got money again from two other Rotary Clubs again in other parts of the state, or actually one Nevada, one California. So our Pancake Breakfast on October 4th is free, so I'm going to come by, and if you want some, just let me know. Our Rotary Club continues to give small grants, so you saw we got the $11,000 today. We give grants between $500 and $5,000 to nonprofit organizations doing programs and service in Altadena community. We started our community neighborhood gathering grants. Those are really around the block captains or the town council members. If you want to bring any of your neighbors together, we will give you up to $300 of store credit at Altadena Grocery Outlet. So please, if you want to have a block, you know, if you want to do something within your census tract, ask for the money, it's there, until we run out. And then, if you just want to know under transparency, and some of you had heard in the public eye that there was some bad news about some of where the dollars were going of all the money raised in Eaton Fire throughout Southern California, and I will tell you that Rotary Club has put our information on our webpage, altedinarotary.org. You can see who we gave grants to in the first quarter, who we give it to the second, and around October 15th, we will have the third quarter in there. So we're as transparent as we can be, and that's it. Oh, thank you.
Awesome. Any questions for Mark on either front? No? Okay. And he's in the back with the Pancake Breakfast tickets. What was that, Councilmember Vega? Oh, yes, Mark, come this way with them too.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great, great, great. All right, we are moving on to LA County Public Works Eaton Fire Parkway Tree Update, and that is Regina. Yes, that is. And you have a presentation, right, Councilmember?
Hi, everyone. I'm Regina Kenji with LA County Public Works Road Maintenance Division. I will be talking about the Parkway Tree status in Altadena after the Eaton Fire. So before the fire, we had about 16,300 active Parkway trees in Altadena. That's on the left. And on the right side, as of September this month, we have about 15,000 active Parkway trees in Altadena. Eaton Fire related to removals to date, we have about 1,300. On the map there, it shows their locations, as well as the Eaton Fire footprint. There's a little chart there to show the removals per month, with the peak months being the two following the fire. The reason for removing these trees obviously is fire damage, meaning that they were structurally compromised, they're hazardous and unstable, there was irreparable fire damage, or there was no regrowth observed by an arborist after six months. So the next slide shows an example of some structurally compromised trees that we had to remove. As you can see, those are not good to go. The next slide shows hazardous, unstable. These ones are burnt, and they're leaning into the roadway. And the next slide shows some irreparable fire damage, completely burnt, no chance of regrowth. Going on to the removal reason of no regrowth observed by an arborist after six months. So right after the fire, Public Works ISA-certified arborists performed a survey of the Altadena area to determine which fire damaged trees needed to be removed. Those trees that were not removed were placed under quarterly monitoring to see if they are going to regrow and come back. So in early April, we had a little over 3,000, and as of right now, we have 200. And we have some ongoing projects for stump removals. So the trees that were removed because of the Eaton Fire and the windstorm events earlier this year, all of those stumps, approximately 346, are going to be removed by the end of the project, which will be completed at the end of October. And upcoming, we have a tree removals project, which is set to begin on Monday next week. We'll be removing approximately 60 trees. These are being removed for safety reasons, as shown before. Like, obviously, they're not hazardous and unstable. Those ones have already been removed, but these ones, no regrowth has been observed by our arborists, so we are going to remove them. The 200 trees that were being monitored right now, they're still being monitored. There's a chance for them to come back, and there is also a chance for them to be put onto a future tree removal project. That's okay. This map just shows in red the pending removals in our upcoming project, and the green is the potential removals, the 200 that are being observed. And on the right are just some trees that are on the current project. And just as a reminder, Public Works, we do have a tree planting program. At the moment, we are putting on hold any tree plantings in front of properties that are damaged or are vacant in order to minimize any damages to newly planted trees because of any construction that is ongoing. So when we have like more information on when we will be doing planting in front of homes that are being rebuilt or whatever, we will reach out. There's some QR codes there for our Works app or the Parkway Trees website if you want more information. And any other further questions on the next slide, please feel free to reach out to our tree office. They will have some answers for you about trees. And also, my supervisor, Stephen, he's out today. He was going to do this presentation, but his contact information is up there if you have any other further questions.
Anybody have any questions for her before she goes? Nope. What, go ahead.
Hi. Just a quick, so can a homeowner work with you guys to plant trees through the county? Is that what you said, or is it? I just wanted to try and understand what you meant by that.
Yeah, on our website, we have like a tree planting request form that you can fill out, and you can say like where you want it and what's going on, and then someone from our tree crew will reach out, and they will discuss with you the viability of it being planted wherever you want it, and if there's like enough room for it, and what kind of species and everything.
Hi, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is it available, the data per census tract? The number of trees that have been removed, trees that are under watch? Is that information provided per census tract? Do you know?
I don't think so. No, I do just have the information on the side for you.
Okay, but we can reach out to you.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Just a quick question about palm trees. Is there anything specific? Are you... No, no, in terms of the ones being removed, or is there any? I guess, is there an intention to remove more of the palm trees?
At the moment, I'm not aware of that. I know that right now, we do have our ongoing palm tree maintenance. So we do, we have our contractor in Altadena trimming palm trees, and there's potentially some removals as well, but I don't know about like major...
Yeah, that was a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say you could email Stephen and find out for sure, but that's a good question.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to 5.4, which is Public Works, and that's the draft equity framework.
Good evening. Thank you, Council, and thank you, community members, for the time today. My name is Alicia Ramos, and I am with Public Works. So we are here to just give you a quick update on something we've been working on for a rather long time, about three years. We call it the Public Works Equity Framework. And what that is basically, when we mention framework, it is something that we've put a lot of research into to help us guide decision-making, so that our projects, our services, our programs can result in more equitable outcomes. So we'll talk a little bit about the background, I'll talk about the framework, and then I'll put out the ask that we have tonight, which is, the framework is available online. We ask for your assistance in reviewing it, and any comments that you would like to make, we'll let you know how you can do that. Next, okay. So background, the equity framework, or the pursuit to deliver more equitable work, is something that Public Works has been pursuing for some time. But in August of 2021, the Board of Supervisors passed a motion unanimously to further support Public Works in that endeavor. And so that's what gave rise to the framework. And ultimately, what we're looking to do is to reduce, if not eliminate disparities throughout all the communities that we serve in LA County. Next. So what is equity? This is just a quick illustration to paint a picture of what we mean. You know, the top line, basically, it's a bicycle, one size fits all. And you can see that one size does not fit all, right? It can be the same thing, you can be afforded the same resource, but if it doesn't fit your circumstance, it's not useful to you. And so that's what we mean by equitable work. When you look at the second line, it's the idea of meeting the circumstances of each person in this illustration, but it's also the idea of meeting the circumstances of unique communities. Next. So what did we do in our research? We spent about two years doing this research. We looked at policy and practice review. What are our policies currently? How effective are they? We looked at investment analysis. Where are we putting money? Where are we putting projects? And do we see disparities in communities? And in fact, we do see disparities. We looked at maintenance analysis in the same way. We looked at what we call alignment analysis, which is really us taking a look at all county equity services. Are we in alignment with the bigger picture of what the county as a whole is striving to do? And then lastly, but certainly most importantly, we reached out to community and stakeholders. We conducted, through our community-based organizations, a number of interviews. We conducted tabling events. We also had a survey out there for some time, which hopefully some of you folks took part in, and that's where we gathered the research. Next. What that research showed us, when we gleaned it and pulled it apart, we had six main themes that came through from all the different comments, questions, and suggestions that came through from any number of those research avenues. We first came up with community engagement and partnership. Folks were saying, we'd like to have a continuing relationship with the county, not just come here once, ask for what you need, and then we don't see you again until a building pops up in our neighborhood. Ongoing relationship is what we were asked. Use of data, and I heard some of that here tonight. What are you doing with the data? Do you have data in a certain way? What came through as a theme is, county has access to a lot of information, a lot of data. Are we putting it to the most efficient and streamlined use? And so we are endeavoring to make that much more accessible, useful, and streamlined, so we can produce more results with it. Workforce diversity and inclusion, folks asking whether or not the county reflects the communities that it serves. And in fact, we generally do. But where we also had some research come back to us, it's not just how are we composed, but what are our skill sets? We're very technical, we're very engineering-based. Do we have skill sets that can also relate to community? And that's where we need to grow. Policy and practice, are we practicing what we preach? Are we making policy for good practices that we do have? And are we sharing those universally across the departments, that you get consistent service? Intra and inter-agency collaboration, we realize that when you're in a community, there are a lot of different stakeholders, right? You've got county, you've got city, you've got state. Part of what came through was, we'd like to see the county be more collaborative in terms of, you recognize what we're dealing with. Can you folks partner internally more, so that we're not asking all the time? Who do we go to? How do we get this done? And then lastly here, organizational culture. Public Works has to practice what we preach. We need our own organization to practice equitable service. Next. And we're going to advance, this is the equity framework, and this is what we have here. This is what is online and available. We have in the back what we call fact sheets. You can take this home tonight. In the back, you'll see a QR code. You can sap that with your phone. There is also an email address, and there is a website that you can access the framework. We ask you to please take time to go through it, be aware of the strategies inside. These are all the ways that we are aiming to make those improvements, and we welcome your comments if you would like to. You can do those online. Okay? All right, any questions?
Any questions? Okay, and we can post this on our website.
Absolutely, and we'll provide that too. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we are moving on to our library director, Winslow.
Good evening, town council members, chair and community members. I'm Nikki Winslow with the Altadena Library District, and I'm going to be quick tonight. I promise. I was told, I was told, let's go. All right, so just in case you didn't know, and you're living under a rock, the Bob Lucas Library is now open. Hooray! I know. If you haven't been, I highly encourage you to check it out. It's a gorgeous renovation. So the library currently is open Monday through Friday, 10 to 6. In addition to that, as our alternate site when we renovate the main library starting early next year, which I'm about to cover, we also have the Altadena Library at Loma Alta Park. Thank you, Guillermo, for hosting us. And that is also open Monday through Friday, 10 to 6, and Saturdays from 10 to 4. It's housed in what is normally usually called the social hall. And then, of course, our main library open Monday and Tuesday until 8:00 PM, and then Wednesday through Friday, 10 to 6, and Saturday, 10 to 4. So three sites, pretty exciting. So we just want to highlight that. As part of our Bob Lucas Library renovation, we did paint over the mural that was done with students from Franklin Elementary years ago, and we're going to be doing a new mural project. We really want a lot of community feedback. So there's gonna be eight creative design sessions, including our poet's laureate and many other artists, those that were involved in the original mural project between Friday, September 26th through the 28th. If you can't make it, you can submit ideas about what like you'd like to see included in the project. And then we'll be painting it sometime in October is the plan. So really want to push that, we'd love people to sign up and be involved with the mural project. So our main library building project, we're still in pursuit of our conditional use permit with LA County. The next step with that is posting the environmental impact report, which I believe is supposed to post on September 24th. Once that is the case, there will be a 45-day period where community members can comment. Largely, the environmental impact report was triggered by the fact that of course, it's a historic gem. So if you have comments, please share those with that, within those 45 days. We will be bringing this to the land use committee as well as town council ahead of the conditional use permit hearing, which we think is gonna happen in early 2026, at which point we will hopefully be starting renovation. I am really excited to announce that for the second time in a row, our Altadena Poets Laureate were named by the Academy, American Academy of Poets to their fellowship for 2025. Two years ago, our poets were also named and that's, there are two out of 22 people nationally that are recognized with this award. Due to the extra funding that they've received from the academy, there's additional program that will, will take place. We had their big launch event this last weekend at the main library with over 70 people that showed up, which was exciting. They have a whole slate of programs coming up, including this Saturday, as well as two programs in October. So spread the word, there are either gonna be workshops or readings, and all of the readings will have open mics. So if local poets want to come and recite poems, we encourage you to do so. It's also, September is National Library Card Side Up Month. We've been partnering with many of our local businesses, including Grocery Outlet and others. We do have two more events coming up to sign people up for library cards and spread the word. On this Friday, we'll be at Callisto Tea House at 11:00 AM. And then we're actually going to be doing a Little Free Library ribbon cutting at Webster's Pharmacy on Saturday, September 27th at 11:00 AM. So excited to launch another Little Free Library. And then in partnership with the City of Pasadena, Sierra Madre and several other groups in the region, we're doing the Celebration of the Young Child, that's starting next, that'll be next week. The big celebration is this coming Saturday at Brookside Park in Pasadena. And then we'll have two other events specific, and, and the young child is really geared at children ages zero to five and providing their families resources for early literacy efforts. So again, we have a couple of events next week, highly encourage you to take a look at that. And of course, this is just like skimming the surface of all the programs that we do. I highly recommend you check out our events page on the website. And then as Mark mentioned, Taste of Dina is gonna be on Saturday, October 4th, from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Altadena Main Library in our parking lot. We'll be honoring Town Council Chair Victoria Knapp. Yes. As well as one of our library staff members, who we also named our literacy classroom after Modesta Nava. Tickets are still available, they're only $25 this year, so please visit the Altadena Library Foundation website to purchase tickets. And I think that's, no. We are doing Community Health Fair, I wasn't sure if I'm presenting next month, so I thought I should mention it really quickly. Saturday, October 18th, this is the first health fair that I'm aware that we've hosted since I've been director, which has almost been six years now. So get it on your calendar, 9 to 4, we'll be having a health fair next month. And I think that's it, thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Good job, good job. G-O-O-D-J-O-B. Okay, we are moving on to LA County Public Works. I saw Guillermo in the house, come on up.
Don't worry.
Let's commend Councilmember Harms, that awesome tech skills. Continue tonight.
All right, everybody, I'm gonna go through a couple of our park programs. I'm gonna go to the next slide. So we have a few things going on right now, so at, for the parks, we got our hour spa program, so we did extend the hours like I mentioned before, so we actually go all the way up until 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and we do serve supper for the kids. Our Everybody Plays did extend an extra 30 minutes, so now we close at 6:00 PM. And we have different activities every single week, and then Friday, we try to do Fun Friday. And coming up actually, at the end of the week, on the 19th, we're gonna have a Back to Camp Night slash Parent Meeting. So we just want everyone to come for an open house. We are inviting all the parents, but everyone is welcome to come out. From 4:00 to 6:00 PM, we're gonna have the activities, and then 6:00 to 6:30 during pickup time, parents are more than welcome to stay. And then for our Tiny Tots, we're actually going into, they're in two-week sessions, Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We're already starting our second session next week. And then a program that we're actually bringing back is gonna be our Urban Ballroom Dance, that's with Ms. Tomarscham. They're gonna be at the Main Recreation Center, that's from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. And in case some of you aren't aware, but Aging and Disabilities does use our community room as a satellite center, and their programs are from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then another cool program that we got going on, that's been going on for a few weeks now, is actually the Dealing with Disaster and How to Cope and Thrive. So the Department of Mental Health is hosting kind of an open session for community members just to kind of discuss what their experiences with Altadena Fire. So on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're actually located in the Alta Chat area, the times are there, either 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM, 12:00 PM to 1:30 PM. And then on Saturdays, after the Urban Ballroom Dance Class, that's actually, that's actually when they're inside of our community room. All right. And then the next one, we got a bunch of park events. So the September Community Meeting, that's gonna be the big one, that's actually this Thursday, that's from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We invite all of you guys to come out to kind of vocalize a lot of the park programs that you want to see implemented, and also because it's gonna be a lot with the funding for our, our park budget. So the reason that's very important is that it, the way that it goes, it's based on the votes that you guys get on the park programs, is where they're gonna allocate most of those funds. And then here are some of the other programs we got going on, so Hispanic Heritage Month, we're gonna have on September 26th, the LA Opera's gonna be doing a watch party for West Side Story, that's gonna be located in Lower Loma, where the rotary concerts were held. We are gonna have a Girls Empowerment Conference, that's actually gonna be located in the East Los Angeles Community College Center. It's gonna be a huge event. That one is actually, we're gonna have Transportation at Loma Alta, so anybody that's interested, I did leave a flyer back there. It does require registration, so it's gonna be a first come, first served basis. And then we're gonna have our Trick or Treat Village, and then our Dia de los Muertos event, and our Harvest Festival. And then Aquatics Update, I know last month I was asked about the extended hours for the pool, so we got some good news, Catherine Barger gave us a little bit of funding, so now we got extra hours on there. So that's kind of why it's very important for the September meeting, if you guys continue to vocalize, they'll be able to increase the funding for those programs. And then one final item I did want to bring up, so SolCal Edison actually reached out to the Parks Department, they are gonna be hosting a community meeting for everyone to come out. They did reserve it for the September 27th and the 29th. So they're gonna be giving us a flyer to help share that with everyone. So right now, just so you guys are aware, those are the two like tentative dates that they have.
Yeah, I'll just tell them that 15 minutes. Unless they don't want anybody to be covered, which they may not.
Yeah. So yeah, there's my contact information, and there's also Charles Carter, who's the Recreation Supervisor at Loma Alta. Guys have any questions?
Any questions for Guillermo? Oh. Thank you for being here.
All right. Good evening to everybody. Thanks for having me here, and also special thanks to Councilmember Marcusson for inviting me. I'm Richard Smart, I'm the Regional Park Superintendent for Eaton Canyon Natural Area and Nature Center, and also currently the Park Superintendent at San Gabriel River Park. And the reason why I wanted to speak here today is to focus on three main topics. The first one is to remind, emphasize that Eaton Canyon is currently closed to the public. This closure is for the rest of the year, and almost 100% likely that it is gonna be for all of 2026 as well. This is a hard closure, and that means that nobody is supposed to be in there unless you've been given permission from the County of Los Angeles Parks and Recreation Department. There are fees that can be assessed if people are caught being inside Eaton Canyon without permission. All four entrances into Eaton Canyon off of Altadena Drive, New York Drive, Midwick Drive and Pinecrest are all currently closed and locked. There are signs posted announcing the closure in different languages. So it's just something I wanted to draw attention to. There has been activity in Eaton Canyon where, including trespassing, but also approved activities. So there have been different county entities in there, as well as state and federal entities, doing different types of work such as removal of debris, as well as different types of assessments and some early planning. The reasons for these closures, the hard closure, number one is safety, safety for people. Immediately after the fire, as you all know, the entire canyon was on fire, the nature center was destroyed, so there is no nature center there, there are no more restrooms, there are not, staff is not on site. So that infrastructure that was built in there for accommodation and safety is no longer there. We also are fairly concerned with the flooding that happened in February and March. The flooding and the debris flows completely eroded trails, and it's just not safe to be in the park at this moment in time. The other reason why we don't want people in there is for, to give nature time to heal. So we are asking people to stay out of the canyon. But I also wanted to emphasize that the county, the Department of Parks and Rec is committed, and I mean committed, to the reopening and the restoration and the rebuilding of Eaton Canyon and the nature center. There already are working groups in the earliest stages of planning and work involved, and that's not just county staff, it is including the Angeles National Forest, several nonprofits. So it is a collaborative effort. And then building off of what Guillermo was talking about, Eaton Canyon is also hosting a September community meeting. Ours is this Saturday at 10:00 AM at Loma Alta Park. Loma Alta has always been amazing, but is incredibly amazing now because they're helping everybody. I have flyers posted in the back, but this community meeting is gonna be a great time to learn more. In addition to me there, there's gonna be people from Park Planning and Development, and we'll, we'll be able to talk more about initial plans and ideas for Eaton Canyon. It's a great opportunity to provide feedback as well. And any questions for me?
It's so good to see you here tonight. Any questions for him regarding the canyon? Nope, we all know it's closed. Okay, good, good. Thank you so much, hard closed, hard closed. Okay, we're gonna bring up the representative from the Eaton Fire Collaborative, Bree Jensen.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm just here to share the relationship between the Eaton Fire Collaborative and the community. There's been a lot of questions of the role of the Eaton Fire Collaborative and where we are now, so I just want to share that it was beautifully organically built with many of you participating in the building, excuse me, it's been a long day, in the building of the collaborative as a whole, and it's now has about 150 organizations participating. So it's a really wonderful time to just bring everybody together, work together and make sure that we're not duplicating our work and doing it together. So where we're at now is we just, as the chair announced, we just had our press conference today, that we opened the Eaton Fire Collaborative Collaboratory, which is going to be a community space, it's right on Woodbury, right next to the McDonald's. And it's a huge space where we can bring in community members to get access to services so they can literally just walk in and say, you know, I'm looking for X, Y and Z, and we can direct them to an organization that's on site. So that's gonna be an awesome opportunity to bridge that gap where the community is wondering, well, the nonprofits are meeting and, and how can I access that? The collaboratory is gonna be a great resource for that. The nonprofits will have spaces throughout that space as well. We also have the Long Term Recovery Group, which I won't go into again because I feel that Chair Knapp covered that very well, but that's gonna hit the immediate needs of the community. And then we also have our Community Recovery Group, which are committees that are addressing things like business recovery, rebuilding, we have experts that are vetted and they're doing things like bulk buys and resourcing the community in different areas like that. We have, what are some of the other committees? We have Case Management, but we're calling it Support Facilitation. We also have a group that's doing community and art. So all of those committees are not only working together in their expertise, but they're also cross collaborating and, and really bringing such an awesome experience for the community and hopefully meeting those needs. So happy to answer any questions.
Will you remind everyone the date that it's formally opening?
October 7th, it'll be open to the community. Yes, thanks.
Any questions about, go ahead, Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, could you explain with 150 community-based organizations, what is the space like? Cause I'm sure you don't have 150 offices, like what is it gonna look like?
Yeah, so not all of the organizations needed office space, right? So essentially, it's an enormous room with offices all around, and those, there's about 30 organizations that will have office space that are there full-time. Those are organizations that put their name in the hat to want to be there. If they're not on site, we're going to have, because, because we have access to the full 150 organizations, we could get resources to the people that come in, even if they're not on site, we can connect them pretty quickly.
So just as an FYI, it's 36,000 square feet, which includes warehouse space and the office space and a central sort of bullpen. So it's a really beautiful space that'll be welcoming to all fire survivors who are looking for resources and services.
Yes, and we'd love to invite all of you, we'll get information out to the big opening, we'll have the community come out and give you all a tour, cause it's, even I, you know, working on the whole process, I didn't even understand how big it was and how meaningful it's really gonna be until I saw it, so yes.
Okay, any other questions? Nope. Okay, it was so good to see you.
Thank you.
Twice in one day. Okay, we are moving on to our illustrious Owen Brown Committee, and that is former Councilmember Chris O'Malley.
Shucks, shucks, please, please, thank you so much. These are just as exciting as I remember them. Thank you for having me, guys. The Owen Brown Graveside Committee is excited to announce the premiere of Owen Brown's Body. It's a 20-minute documentary produced by the committee and designed to anchor a professional development course that will be, that will link the Brown family history to the local area and be available to local school teachers, both public and private. Pablo Morales, the director, and Michelle Zach, Chair of the Committee, will be, will host a Q and A following the screening. The committee has roots dating back to 1989. It's obtained for the gravestone LA landmark status and protection of the five acres surrounding the site by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservatory so that it will remain free from development. The committee welcomes everybody to come join us for snacks, refreshments, there will be snacks and refreshments, and, and the screening and the Q and A on September 25th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Altadena Main Library. For information, Nick and Connor should be posting the flyer to the ATC Committee website, but they didn't return my email, so I'm not sure if they are. Or you can go to the committee website at altadenaheritage.org/owen-brown.
We forgot how much we missed you until you came back. So thanks for coming back.
I'm easy to miss.
You are, you are.
Forget, I'm easy. Questions?
Any questions on Owen Brown? Bueller, bueller?
I did, I put a dollar in there.
Aw, thank you so much for that. Good to see you, go Dodgers.
Good to see you.
Go Dodgers. Okay. We lost our land use chair who's not feeling well, so we're going to skip item 6.1, and we are going to move on to item 6.2, the election, to the Chair of the Election Committee, Chair Maldon.
Good evening, everybody. We have our elections coming up, and I'd like to give some information on pretty much what our initiative is this year, especially since things have changed, and we want to make sure that every Altadian voice is heard. And so with that, we have decided to expand our voting dates and our locations. But I first want to go into how to apply as a candidate. We want to make it easy for you to participate, and so we're offering an added feature where you can apply online, and if you just press play, it should go through all the slides. And so after this meeting tonight, I'm going to post our welcome packet online, which you can apply online, or you can mail it to this address, to the community center, and the deadline is October 17th. And if you are displaced and you'd still like to represent your census tract, you are definitely eligible. All we're asking you to do is just provide the address that you lived at, that way we can confirm what census tract you are applying to represent. I had these slides go for 20 seconds. Okay, and then the next slide is about the requirements. We must be at least 18, reside in Altadena, or have been displaced. And then the application packet, you have to include the signed application, $35 fee, and then a statement, which we will share with everybody at the polling. And if you want to do any advertising or marketing for yourself, let us know so we can look. And so this is kind of a step-by-step of how to apply online with our new form, which will also, I'll have a QR code at the end of this presentation, but also it'll be online. And so this is gonna mirror the paper application. So basically, what you first want to do is go onto the first. So basically, what you first want to do is go onto the first page and locate your census tract, and I have that linked to the county website, where you can then enter your address, and it's gonna tell you exactly what census tract you live in. And so I'm using, um, Jackson Elementary School, for example, and it's gonna tell you with the address location, and, and if you zoom out, it'll then tell you where the census tract is. Um, and so this, uh, school, this address in particular is in 4610, but it has all of the eight, um, census tracts there. With that information, then you're gonna enter in your name, your phone number, your email address, and then your Altadena residence. Confirm your age. And then I also have links to our bylaws that you can also review. Oh, shoot, it's not loading. It's, sorry, it's buffering. Um, this page is basically an opportunity for you to upload, um, your residence. You can upload, um, your utility bill, a copy of your driver's license, just to confirm, and this is also to confirm what census tract that you gathered in the first page. Um, sorry, this is, it's like not buffering right now. Yeah, okay, and then, and this page is where you can upload your, um, your statement, basically telling the community about yourself. And that information will be, um, shared with the voters when they come to the polls. Um, is there a way to refresh this or no? Yeah, okay, sorry, this is, I'll also have this video on our website, so you can go through step-by-step to see. And so that's a QR code if you want to use, so that you can apply online. And then we're also looking for volunteers to help out. Again, we're expanding our, our poll dates, our, um, locations, and we're looking for people to man the polls, we're looking for people to commit three hours, and you're gonna basically help voters cast their vote, um, providing basic information to allow the voters, cause basically the voters can only apply for, uh, council people within their census tract, and these are all the polling locations and dates that we have confirmed. We've got Bob Lucas, Altadena Main Library, Loma Alta Park Library Branch, Prime Pizza Grocery Outlet, and Altadena Town and Country Club. And those will all have opportunities to vote on Saturday, November 1st, Tuesday, the 4th, and also, um, Saturday, the 8th. And these are the shifts that we're looking to fill in for our volunteers, and so the next slide will give you an opportunity to scan the QR code if you'd like to volunteer to help us with, it's under five minutes, I promise. And so that's the QR code if you're interested in volunteering at our polling. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to email me. My address is here, and it's also gonna be, um, linked to our, um, election packet. And so I've sent all the council members, um, updates to our election rules. Yeah, it's gonna, and I've received a lot of your feedback, and I appreciate that. It's gonna help us make sure that our election process is very clear. Um, did anybody else have any other, um, suggestions, or if you'd like to discuss anything that I sent to you regarding the election rules, or any of the proposals that we have, the dates and locations?
Are you gonna make a motion for the election rules?
Yes, can I make a motion for the election rules that I sent previously?
So there's a motion for the approval of the election rules with the dates as sent to the council prior to this meeting. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we've got council member Stuart Gordon asseckening, um, all in favor of the election rules as presented, raise your hand. Okay, and all opposed or abstained? Abstaining, Pat? Or opposing, you're opposing. You're opposing, okay. All right, so we've got approval on the election rules. Thank you so much, and thanks for all the work. This was a lot of work, I know. Okay. Oh, is it me? No, it's not me. No, it is me. Okay. No, it is. Funny, though. Okay, so just quickly, the Altadena Town Council is celebrating our 50th anniversary on October 11th. It will be right here in this, um, facility and outside on the patios, front and back. It'll be from 12 to 4:00. So it does look a little different than what we were planning last year in light of the fire, um, but there will be celebration as well as resource, uh, our community partners will be here as well. So 12 to 4:00 here on Saturday, October 11th. It is actually the 50th anniversary of when voting occurred in 1975 on October 11th. So very symbolic that way. Did I need to do a motion to, we were gonna approve? No. Well, do we, no, oh, no, we can't. No, 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 we don't. Do we want to discuss it? Sure. Does anybody have any questions? Isis, do you have questions? Wait, what are we discussing? I just, wait, not, we're not discussing your, on the 50th, right? Or on the election? Oh, any questions? Was there any discussion? Pat, did you have any? Oh, my God.
I already voted.
Where is the point of order? Where did Chris O'Malley go? Okay.
We voted.
Was there any discuss, Pat, did you want to discuss anything around the, the, um, election rules, or no? I know. I know, what happened was, we took the vote, we had a second, we should have had it, we could have had a discussion before we voted, we didn't. I just wanted to give you an opportunity in case you wanted to say something, you don't have to say anything, on the election rules. Okay, go ahead.
I, I have a concern on a couple of, of things that are said in here.
Okay.
And I, I, I don't mean to say that everything has to be done the same way every single time, I'm not saying that at all. One of the concerns is counting votes. We're gonna have people who are, typically, the votes are counted by the election committee.
Okay.
But, uh, but on, according, according to these instructions, they're accounted, they will be counted every day, um, by whoever is, happens to be working at the booth at that, at that particular time. And I'm wondering why, one of the things that, uh, a, a number, a number of elections that I've been involved in, that people get really impressed about, is usually, all of the, all the ballots in the, in their little boxes go and are, uh, picked up by the sheriff's deputies and are saved there, and then, so they are always, um, you know, safe until it's time to count the votes at the end of the, of the time. And according to the new rules, they're gonna be counted by whoever happened, I don't know who's going to be counting them, um, at the end of every, of every voting day, of the three voting days at all of the different places. And I do have a concern just about the, the safety of the information, information that can be easily talked, even though you say, "Oh, we're not gonna tell anybody how many votes we got."
Yep.
And that seems to be unfair to other, you know, to other voters.
So that's the chain of command that we usually try to protect in the custody of the ballots from voting day to voting day. So was there a particular reason why we changed it? Go ahead.
Oh, the, the re, what I added to the election rules was that the volunteers are just gonna co, count the ballots, not count what the tallies were, just so that we have a check that we know that from this location, this many people voted.
They got 50.
And that.
That's not how it read.
Oh.
It sounded like they were counting the votes.
Say it again. Did you read it that way, too?
I updated the rules and let you know what the actual language was in it, um, after you'd sent the concern, and I also added that the sheriffs will keep the ballots during, in between the polls and, yeah. So I've, I've added that language, but I also just clarified that the volunteers are just there to count how many votes they received, not who, what the votes were.
Received what? Okay. So that will at least, will know then how many total votes were cast at any particular polling location, and then where will they go from there, from, at the end of the voting day?
At the end of the voting day, it'll go to the sheriff's station, and then, because our voting dates are so spread out, between two Saturdays and a Tuesday, the election committee will then grab, um, the boxes and put them back at the polling station, at the polling locations.
Right, and which is, which is the, yeah, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
So you do, are you not gonna be, um, having a, a, a sign-in? Cause you can just, you can see how many votes are counted, how many, what you got just by looking at the piece of paper.
So what she's saying is that we usually would, at the polling station, we have the, the voter sign-in, and then ju, usually what happens is we cross-reference that sign-in sheet, the number there, with the number of votes that were cast, to make sure that there's no discrepancy. Are we doing a sign-in sheet?
Or do, everything that we've been doing in the past, as far as once you arrived to the polls, has stayed the same. The only thing that we're changing is that we're expanding the dates and the times and locations, but as far as procedure, uh, and you, and the reason why I added that we're gonna count the number of ballots casted, because we've expanded so much, I want to make sure that we have, um, a good tally of what we have as the days are progressing, instead of waiting until the last day and having to go through a whole, I mean, I'm hoping that we're gonna get a, a good response.
Even though it's all, it's all on the sign-in sheet, everything you're saying is right there, so, already, when they, when they sign in, right?
Yeah, but I do think we can cross-reference like we always have, and just make sure that they equal each other. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to follow up on the box with the votes in it, um, are they staying sealed until counting, or are they getting taken out of the box, and then the box gets returned for the next voting day? The box with the ballots?
I don't, I mean, I don't think taking already casted ballots back to the polling stations is the safest solution.
No, no, I mean, like, are they, cause you mentioned that the boxes will be, get taken back from the sheriff's station, back to the polling places for the next day. My question is, are you taking, are the ballots being taken out at the end of the day, and then the empty boxes are going back, or are they actually sealed boxes to be emptied on day of count? Because when we did the election committee last year, every box was sealed until we sat in our committee, sat together and counted, so that everybody sees that we crack in this ballot box open together for the first time, so it's not been, like, it, for the integrity of it, yeah.
I think we can, I think we can provide for, how many ballot boxes would we need for every ballot, for every polling place to have a new box with each day?
So it's?
18.
We have six locations times three.
So 18, yeah. Okay, so I think we should consider that, and that can be an expense that we provide. So, yep, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Hey, I, I, I said, a quick question, thanks. Regarding, I know you said that people who have been displaced can still run. As far as people who have been displaced who want to vote and who have been displaced, do they still have to come to whatever polling place, show their address of where they used, where, where they live, at the, you know, in the census tract to then vote, right? They can't vote, uh, virtually, like, online or anything like that? It's gonna be all, it's still in person? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay.
And I will say that I think that this is something that the, um, the future bylaws committee might want to take, um, up, because this is now the second time that our voting process has been disrupted by pandemic and now fire, and so I think we're gonna need to come up with some provisions in the future to make this a more seamless process. Okay, are we good? Okay, Pat, does that change your vote at all, or you're okay? Because now I'd have to go back, we'd have to start it all, which we could do. You're okay?
We're, we're fine, just leave everything.
Leave it as was, okay, great. All right, thank you, and thank you so much for your diligence, um, Councilmember Maldon. Okay, we are moving, so the 50th anniversary, you already heard it, October 11th here, 12 to 4:00. Got it? Moving on. Education Committee, back to you.
Okay, I'll keep this quick. I just wanted to make an announcement that, um, Town Council will be there in partnership with Penn on Wednesday, September 24th. They're having a feature of Choosing Your Elementary. Um, it'll take place at the Pasadena Unified School District offices on 351 South Hudson Avenue. It is, uh, from 7:00 to 8:30, and it's gonna be a casual meeting where prospective parents will be able to talk to existing or current parents about their experiences, what programs they've picked, and why and how it's gone for their students and their families. Um, so again, it's September 24th.
Say that aga, say where it is again? Oh, it's down at?
Uh, the, uh, PUSD offices at 351 South Hudson Ave, room 151.
Great. I just wanted to make a comment that I do think one of the things that the Education Committee should take up is the survey of residents and communication with the school board about the reopening of, the intended reopening of Elliott. So I would just put that out on the record, that I think it's something we need to, I know that Altadena Arts Magnet is another issue, um, but it's separate from the, the, um, destruction that Elliott underwent, and so just making sure that the school board knows what the community wants in reopening that school at some point. Sir, go ahead.
Isis, I, I do want to also express, uh, thanks for continuing the internship program, and you know we've got multiple interests, um, throughout the community to, so we'll keep coordinating with that. And lastly, um, I, I'd love to discuss, uh, offline, um, about art projects that we can put into the collaboratory from local schools to have galleries and potentially in the store to sell, um, for fundraising.
Great ideas, thank you so much. Anything else? Okay, moving on to our Altadena Eaton Fire Relief Fund.
The Altadena Eaton Fire Relief Fund was created to give Altadena residents direct cash relief. All funds that are received go directly to Altadena residents, and the volunteer committee takes no fees for their time working tirelessly to review all applications and give grants. The committee plans to disperse a second round of grants through our partners at GoFundMe, ranging between $500 and $1,000, total of $225,000, again, on September 30th. This will either be sent as a Visa gift card or directly into people's GoFundMe accounts. So we will give approximately, um, 248 grants on September the 30th. The advisory committee is continuing to raise funds to give a third round of grants in the coming months. This need is still staggering, and if you are able, if anyone who is listening to this outside of the area or even within, please go to eatonfirefund.com and donate, so that the people of Altadena can continue to receive the funds that they need. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Okay, we are moving on to general public comment. Go ahead, Vice Chair Arzon.
Thank you, Chair. As a reminder, uh, public has a right to comment. There's comment cards on the back table. I've received one. Jody, if you can come on up, um, uh, you have two minutes. This is Jody McLaughlin. We'll, we'll start when you speak.
Traffic jam. Okay, and then give.
Thank you. Hi.
Thank you.
And when you're ready, Jody, thank you.
Okay, I am ready. Go.
Uh, thank you for having me for the two minutes, I appreciate that. Um, I am with Altadena Steadfast, or we are really a local group of community members, and we're focusing on the rebuild, redesign, rebuild, reimagining of our commercial and public spaces. We are hosting an open house at the Loma Alta Gym on October 4th from noon to 4:00, and it's an open house, so people can come and go as they please, and we'll have, um, I think about six stations set up in addition to a children's corner, but the idea is to get input from the community, cause it's really a community-driven event. And so we'll have stations, everything around destinations, uh, community values, getting around, gathering spaces, parks and open spaces, so people can really weigh in, and they, we are, we are partnering with a firm called SWA, it's a landscape design, urban design firm, and they will be gathering all of this input, that then will inform how they start to frame up what this could actually look and feel like. Um, at the end of the day, we will have a set of, uh, drawings, plans, artwork, a design brief, that we will present to representatives of the county, as well as, uh, the supervisor's office. Um, at the event, we're gonna have representatives from the county there, we'll also have, uh, representatives from the Altadena Heritage. So we're hoping everyone can join us. We've got a poster in the back. We are about to launch a website with a QR code, so we're getting very sophisticated. Uh, we hope to have that launching early next week, and, uh, you'll be able to get some more information there. We also have, if you have any questions, you can send an email to info.altedinas steadfast@gmail.com. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next, we have Natalie Auerstlout, from the Foothill Municipal Water District Hazard Mitigation Plan. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, thank you for having me. My name is Natalie Auerstlout, I'm the district engineer for Foothill Municipal Water District. So I'm here to present the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan that we're preparing. Um, we are the wholesale water provider to Altadena, La Cañada, and La Crescena, um, and we are working together with Lincoln Avenue Water Company, Las Flores Water Company, and three retail agencies in La Cañada and La Crescena to prepare this hazard mitigation plan. Uh, this document is- This document is FEMA required for hazard mitigation grants and public assistance funds, and the plan aims to reduce or eliminate risks to life and property by implementing mitigation strategies. So Foothill submitted a grant for this, to prepare this plan in 2023, and we were awarded the grant in June of 2024. So we had started the plan, and unfortunately, the Eaton Fire hit, but we still really want to move forward with the plan because the funds are now more important than ever before. So we would, we are asking to have the public survey filled out by all the members of Altadena and everybody in our service area. The document does follow FEMA's mitigation plan requirements that includes public outreach, and we have a governing body called the Planning Committee, which Nick and Victoria and Captain Marquez are on. And we released the public survey to gather information on perceptions of hazards in our area, and it doesn't only include fire, it also includes earthquakes, floods, and all natural hazards. So we have the QR code here that was in the back of the room as well to scan to complete the survey, and I have printed copies as well. That's it. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for staying so late. We appreciate it. And we'll get this, link to the survey on our website as well so that we can push it out easier. What's the deadline for the survey?
It's an ongoing survey, and then it'll feed the draft report, so we can present the results of the draft report when it comes out in the spring of 2026.
Perfect. Okay, great. Any, no questions. Lucky you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, Natalie.
Chair, if I might say, I think you surprised the chair. You're my alternate.
I'm your alternate.
That's why you were mentioned. And council members, there is a slot on the upcoming water tour that they would love for a council member to join them. Councilmember Wonga and myself have been on it. This is the one to Vegas, to Nevada, and, to Hoover Dam. Yep. It's, it's pretty incredible. If somebody has availability, please discuss with Gary or myself afterward.
I have an email with all the information that I will forward out to everybody. And the deadline is tomorrow, so no pressure, no pressure. Check those calendars. Okay. Okay, we are moving on to census tract reports. That would be 4602.
Thank you, Chair. Mine was already covered with the mention of Farnsworth Park, so I'm good.
Great. Now we are moving on to 4611. Okay, we are, boy, we are so efficient. We have one more.
I'll have to wait for some additional information.
I like how you fessed up there. That was great.
All right. 460301, going once, going twice.
Hello. I'm going to take the time. Sorry. So just quick announcements, Thursday, the 18th is the California Board of Forestry and Fire Protection Zone Zero meeting. It's going to be held at the Pasadena Convention Center, 300 East Green Street. So that is, again, Zone Zero. If anybody needs any more information on that, let us know. Also, the county is doing the LA County Oak Tree Update Ordinance, and they have a special meeting for Altadena on Tuesday, September 23rd. And last, almost last but not least, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, they moved the meeting to October 2nd. So if you would like to give input to the county for the Community Wildfire Protection Action Plan, save Thursday, October 2nd for that date. And last but not least, Melissa and I would like to invite our census tract to come together virtually, likely, in October, along with our altogether block captains to just do a check-in. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to dismiss.
No, adjourn.
To adjourn.
Do I get a second on that?
We're going to adjourn and then dismiss.
Reggie, was that a second? I didn't hear it. Second, great. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for staying. Thank you, Pasadena Media, for your attention. We appreciate you. Thank you. Good to see you, Nina. And hopefully, we'll get somebody for you guys to go on the tour, and maybe we plan a future discussion about water consolidation. Off the record, I said that, I'm sure.